Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you all to the September 3 city council meeting and call this meeting to order. This evening, Councilmember Christopher Ray has an excused absence. So as a reminder, we still have a remote aspect to our meetings, and both staff and members of the public may be participating in tonight's meeting remotely via WebEx. And note that our agenda order is just a little different tonight. We have moved the executive session up on our agenda so that it occurs before the consent calendar. This is because the executive session relates to one of the items that we are requesting your approval of on the consent calendar tonight. The first item on the agenda this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'd invite you to join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, for God, indivisible, ever to end justice.
Thank you. We have a couple of items of special business before we start our regular meeting. So I'm going to do the first one, which is ID 1746. This is the recognition of our Hall of Fame recipient for 2024, Todd Sargent. And Todd, I'd like you to join me up over there. So over on the wall behind our council this evening is the Issaquah Hall of Fame recipients, and we have many of them in the room with us tonight. We held a reception just before and invited members that are in the Hall of Fame and their spouses or partners to come and celebrate Todd's induction into the Hall of Fame. So I'd just like to tell you a little bit about Todd and why he was selected to join the Hall of Fame. Todd was inducted to the Hall of Fame at the Community Awards in Issaquah this past May. The Hall of Fame Award is our community's top honor and is bestowed on individuals who exemplify hallmarks of value of service, leadership, and civic-mindedness. Todd was given this award due to his dedication to public service and his commitment to help preserve and protect local architecture that has significant meaning to Issaquah's history. Todd is best known for his work as an Issaquah Special Commissioner, where he worked closely with the King County Landmarks Commission for 20 years. During Todd's tenure as Special Landmarks Commissioner, he was a vital participant and advocate for six Issaquah properties which achieved landmark status, including the Issaquah Train Depot, Hellstone Feed Store and Gasoline Station, William Conrady House, the Auto Freight Building, Gilman Town Hall and the Jail, and the Coates Garage Building. Todd also served the city in other roles. He served on the City of Issaquah's Planning Commission from 1992 to 1998. He was a member of the Issaquah Historical Society Board from 1998 to 2001, and he continued his active participation in the society for many years after his service on the board. In 2015, he represented the Historical Society as a member of the Old Town Vitality Task Force. I think that is the one that we probably worked on. Could be. Tonight, we want to recognize Todd here in the city council chambers, where his name has been added to the list of award recipients. Todd joins a distinguished list of individuals who've made significant contributions to our community. And if you're a past Hall of Fame recipient, could you stand so we could give you an applause? Come on, you guys. Todd, I'd really like to get a picture of you with the council, but I also just want to give you this opportunity to see anything you'd like to say.
Thank you. The architecture of this city is probably the best artifact we can keep. So I would always advocate, save what we can.
Bring your family up, and we can stand in front of the council for a bigger picture.
Family, if you want to.
Come on up! in Issaquah. You know, these people serve for decades in these roles. It's very exciting. We are going to move on to our next special business item, which is ID 1702, Hispanic Heritage Month Proclamation. And I'd like to invite Alicia Spinner, the Executive Director of the Circle, to the lectern. And I believe, Barb, you have a second name as well.
Yes, Irma Arenas. Thank you. Yes, come on up here. Very, very nice to see you.
Nice to see you, Barb.
All right. I am very honored to present this proclamation honoring Hispanic Heritage Month. Whereas each year, Americans observe National Hispanic Heritage Month from September 15th to October 15th by celebrating the histories, cultures, and contributions of Americans whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, Central America, South America, and the Spanish-speaking nations of the Caribbean. And whereas, according to the 2020 census, the Hispanic population of the United States was 62.1 million people, making people of Hispanic origin the nation's largest ethnic or racial minority, 18.9% of the total U.S. population. And whereas, Issaquah's diversity and Hispanic population have increased over the last 30 years, from 1990, when 95% of the residents were white and only 2% Hispanic Latino, to more recent times, 65.7% of the residents are white and 9% are Hispanic Latino. And whereas, we commit to embracing diversity and inclusion by paying tribute to Hispanic heritage through education, acknowledgement, and celebration within our community. And whereas, this year's theme, Unidos, Unidos?
Unidos.
Unidos, thank you. Is inclusivity for a stronger nation, encourages us to ensure that all voices are represented and welcome to help build stronger communities and a stronger nation. And it encourages us to reflect on all the contributions Hispanics have made in the past and will continue to make in the future, and is also a reminder that we are stronger together. And now, therefore, on behalf of Mary Lou Pollock, Mayor of the City of Issaquah, I do hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th, 2024, to be Hispanic Heritage Month in the City of Issaquah. And I urge the community to join in special observance and celebration of Hispanic heritage and witness whereof I appear here unto, set my hand and seal of the City of Issaquah this third day of September 2024. So Alicia, would you like to say a few words?
Always, Ms. Thank you so much. It's an honor for the Circle to receive this proclamation. I also want to say thank you for your support, because thanks to the support that you're giving us, all the funds and all the help, we are really serving a lot of families. Every day, we're welcoming new families in our community. We are offering them community navigation services, but also education. And Circles, as we like to call them, that are community groups where they're just thinking, you know, gather and to do different things together, but it's really more about getting to know other people in your community, feeling better and more confident about asking questions to us. And we always have community navigators around, so they can, they have someone there to ask the questions. It's very important, and we're growing. We're looking for a space close to downtown, so we are hoping to move soon, but we are looking for a space. And as all you know, it's very hard to find a space close to here, but we want to be here, close to downtown, so we can, you know, be with the other organizations that we work every day, that we send our families. And I want to talk about, just a little bit, just to invite you, about the event that we're doing. We're together with the city. We are doing a family dance. And I'm super excited, because for years, we've been asked about a space or an opportunity for families just to dance together. That's something that, you know, we do in our countries and we miss about doing here. There's not really a space to go and dance with your family, with your little kids, with your teens, and we're finally going to be able to do it. We haven't done much promotion, and we already have over 100 people register. So I know it's going to be a lot of fun, and I wish that you guys can come. I will send the link and the information, but it's going to be at the Picardy Barn on September 29. And we're super excited. And Irma is our volunteer coordinator, so she's been doing most of the work. I'm just here to talk about it. Thank you so much. I invite you. Thank you. We can have music, dancing, and food, which is a pupusa, like a Salvadoran food, and they invite. And the social is always free, and everyone is welcome. Yes.
Thank you, ladies, for all you do to make people coming to Issaquah feel welcome. It's wonderful. The next item of special business this evening is ID 1752, and it is the Eastside Welcoming Week Proclamation. Council President Walsh is going to be presenting this to Nahid Stevens, who works with the Wide World for Refugee. Come on up to the lectern, Nahid. Nahid is also going to be the emcee for the city's Welcoming Week event called Culture Fest. It's being held this Friday outside the community center. And I got to meet Nahid earlier this evening, and she's pretty exciting, just have to say. Welcome.
Well, and we're very excited for Welcoming Week, and so having somebody who can come in and contribute to that and bring the energy, we're here for it. So whereas Welcoming Week, September 13th to 22nd, 2024, is a nationwide celebration honoring the history, achievements, experiences, and struggles of immigrant and refugee people throughout the United States. And whereas the cities of Bellevue, Issaquah, Kirkland, Redmond, and Smamish have jointly celebrated Eastside Welcoming Week for the past eight years. And whereas, Eastside Welcoming Week is an annual event bringing our region together to acknowledge the contributions of immigrants and refugees and the role diverse communities play in fostering inclusion, belonging, and making people feel welcome. And these cities recognize the importance of ensuring that all residents feel safe, secure, and welcome. And whereas, East King County is one of the most racially and ethnically diverse regions in Washington State, with over 35% of our residents coming from places outside of the United States and 38% of residents speaking a language other than English at home. And whereas, in our highly mobile region, nearly 1 in 5 residents have lived in their current residence for less than a year. And whereas, realizing our vision for a welcoming community requires actively addressing the daily challenges of those in our community who do not feel welcome, safe, valued, or included. And whereas, historic and current impacts of individual, institutional, and systemic racism that result in harmful disparities in education, employment, income, housing, criminal justice, and quality of life, as well as sense of belonging. And whereas, our community, like others across the nation, has structures, systems, and policies that contribute to injustice, racial inequality, and discriminatory treatment against residents who are born in another country, are Black, Indigenous, people of color, LGBTQIA+, and other identities. And whereas, to capitalize on diversity as an asset, our community must strive to create a culture and environment that ensure everyone can belong and thrive. And whereas, there are many ways to celebrate Eastside Welcoming Week, including by amplifying the voices and experiences of immigrant people, uplifting them to share their stories, and/or attending a Welcoming Week event. And whereas, events and educational resources in our region help celebrate Welcoming Week. For a list of regional events, visit the 9th Annual East King County Welcoming Week at Eastside for All. Now, therefore, the mayors of Bellevue, Issaquah, Kirkland, Redmond, and Smamish/Washington jointly proclaim September 13th to 22nd, 2024, as Eastside Welcoming Week, and invite the community to engage in opportunities during Eastside Welcoming Week and beyond to learn, connect across differences, and take joint action to achieve a welcoming, equitable, and inclusive community. Thank you. Would you like to say a few words?
First of all, I would like to say I am so honored to accept this proclamation. As an immigrant, to stand before you guys and even recognize is a blessing, and it means a lot, not just to me, to all immigrants across the nation. And by hearing what you just said, as an immigrant and a single mother of this country, I can attest that making us feel a sense of belonging, making the resources possible, on the survival of domestic violence, without the community resources, without partnering up with the nonprofit organizations, and giving the leaders of these nonprofit organizations, especially the Black community, the chance to support some of us, would have been tough. I woke up one day to live a home that I've lived in for 13 years with three little children, all under the ages of three, with a 19-week-old pregnancy, homeless, no money, no nothing. I had no family, and there are so many immigrants who go through this every single day. I used to be an actress in my home country. I've had passion for it since I was nine years old. And even people in my country told me that nobody will recognize you. You're not white. You're not American. But you know what? Due to these programs and these words and people like you, I have been able to prove them wrong. I send them pictures and say, you don't know Americans. You have to give them a chance. I am grateful for every opportunity, and I know that there is more we can do. There is more. This is just the beginning. People like us have benefited from festivals, have benefited from community gatherings, and now we're giving back to the community. And I am a product of that. And I know there are many people who are like me. I am excited to be your emcee. I want to urge all of you to come, bring your friends, and I promise you, it's going to be one of the most memorable festivals you've ever been. Because this is not just your ordinary emcee. This is someone who is coming with a passion that she has harbored for years and years, and she's about to fly. She just needs you to shoot her up there. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members, and thank you to the City of Issaquah.
Thank you, Nahid. Thank you, Council President. That was just amazing. We are now going to move on to the audience comments portion of our meeting, and this is where the members of the public may address council at this time, whether you are here in person or you're attending virtually. Those who signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first. And if you're joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand or send the host a chat message. If you're on the phone, it might be press star 3. If you joined by computer or smartphone, it might be a hand icon. If you're in the room and did not sign up, I will ask for other speakers before closing this portion of the meeting. City Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak for general audience comments or indicated a desire to speak this evening?
Yes.
Thank you. So if you're making comments, you're invited to address the council regarding matters that are directly related to Issaquah's programs, projects, services, or events. Comments related to political campaigns are not permitted. Please direct comments to the whole council and not to individuals. And while this is not a question-and-answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. When recognized, if you are virtual, please unmute your microphone. If you're in this room, please step up to the lectern in the front and press the button to get the red light on. State your name and address and relationship to the city, and speak clearly and pause frequently. Please limit your comments to five minutes. If you're attending virtually and don't respond after your name or phone number is called, or if your connection is lost unexpectedly, the meeting will need to proceed, and you are encouraged to rejoin the meeting if able. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. Public comments written and verbal are an important aspect of the public process, and the city takes comments seriously. We thank you for taking the time to address us this evening. City Clerk, can you identify the first person who signed up to speak?
Yes, Sandila Parimi.
Sandila? Come on up. Press that button in the center, and you should be good to go.
Good evening, Issaquah Council. I'm actually really honored to, you know, just be here and like speak with you guys. First of all, I would just like to say, good evening. How is everyone doing? It's been a long, a long year, and I hope everyone's doing well.
Sandila, I'm going to get you to pull the microphone a little bit closer to you.
Sorry, ma'am.
There you go.
So I'm a Boy Scout. First of all, I'm a senior in Issaquah High School, which is like I'm a 12th grader. And I am currently working on my Eagle Scouts. And Eagle Scout in general, for Boy Scouts, is to, it's the last step in Boy Scouts to get like the highest, to get a achieved role, which is basically for people who've expressed high amounts of values for the Boy Scouts, such as, you know, honor and followed all of the aspects of the Boy Scouts scout law and oath. And with that, like my project is to basically work with the Downtown Issaquah Association, many of you may know, which is on Front Street, which is the Shell gas station, the historical Shell gas station, right? And what we're trying to do is, at the Shell gas station, there's like some areas, such as, there's like this paved area right next to a curb inside of, near the gas station. And what we're trying to do is, we're making a, working with the Downtown Issaquah Association, we're making garden beds. They basically raised garden beds out of wood. And what we're, so far, the process, the station of my project is that we've already raised around $945, sorry. And we've bought a lot of wood, just to be precise, I think 120 planks of wood, and we bought 15 soil bags. And the thing is, ma'am, and also we bought nails. The issue is, we're actually, I still need a lot of gravel. We need gardening cloth, and also we need a little bit more wood. And for that, I'm here to request, ma'am, guys, if you guys could just please help out with just $300 donations, because with that, we'll be able to make it on September 7th, 2024. If that's any way possible, please do help out. And I honestly would like to thank you guys so much for giving me this opportunity to talk about my project and share it with you guys. It's a really big honor from my side. Thank you so much.
Sandila, thank you for taking the time to address your council this evening. We will definitely have someone follow up with you. Thank you. City Clerk, is there anyone else that has signed up to provide comments?
We have one virtual member of the public, but I don't see that they're indicating a desire to speak.
Well, thank you, Sandila. Thank you for coming tonight and talking to us about your project. And just want to make sure, a reminder for anybody else in our viewing audience, that if you want to make comments to your city council, you can do it at any time. So feel free to write them at citycouncil@issquahwa.gov. Our council president does a great job of answering those emails. The next item of business this evening is an executive session. And this is an executive session this evening to discuss collective bargaining per RCW 42.30, point 140 per N4. The item is expected to take approximately 15 minutes. Action is anticipated to follow an open session. Executive sessions are closed to the public. So we'll be going in to executive session at 7:26 PM. Nahid, no, I didn't check. Thank you, Chance. We are coming out of executive session and into open session at 7:42 PM. And the next item of business we have this evening is the consent calendar. I do not have any remarks on the consent calendar. I'd like to know if there's any committee chairs or chair designees who would like to report on consent calendar items. Seeing head nod nose. So the consent calendar was distributed to council in advance, and if authorized, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
They have.
They have.
Thank you. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? Not seeing any indication. Can I get a council motion? Council President?
I move that we approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously, six aye. The next item of business would normally be regular business, but we don't have any of those items tonight, so we're going to move to committee and regional reports, and we'll start with Councilmember Joe.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for my report. The Lodging Tax Advisory Committee will be meeting on September 26 at 3:30 in the afternoon at Tibbetts Valley Agenda to be announced. Cascade Water Alliance Board will be meeting on September 25, and the Public Affairs Committee will be meeting tomorrow morning at 9 o'clock. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall?
Thank you. Two reports, starting with Eastside Fire and Rescue. So the board has been in recess for the month of August, but the Finance and Administration Committee has been busy with budget over the last month. So so far, we've had two initial presentations about the agency's priorities and budget proposal, and now we're heading into another two meetings to discuss before we refer the work of the committee backup to the full board of directors in October. As a committee, our goal is to come up with a draft that delivers quality fire safety and rescue services to the community, but also ensures cost savings for our agency partners like City Visqua. I do want to just call special thanks and attention to the Deputy City Administrator, Andrea Snyder, for joining me at these meetings, for helping me share what our own financial situation looks like here in Issaquah, and identify impacts to our own budget and also opportunities for discussion at the committee level. So thank you very much. It's been tremendously helpful. Much more on this to come next month, but if you have any questions, in the meantime, feel free to let me know, or the Deputy City Administrator, or City Administrator. And then, of course, when it comes up to the full board, Councilmember Martin and myself. The next board meeting is next Thursday, September 12. And the next two, Finance and Administration Committees, are one sometime next week, to be determined, and then another on Wednesday, September 25. All right, next is Eastside Transportation Partnership. So the next meeting is Friday, September 13. We'll be meeting jointly with a number of different regional transportation policy boards in King County, including the South County Area Transportation Board, SCAPDA, and Seashore Transportation Forum. There's not a published agenda. I just assumed that that's how you pronounce it, skeptad. I don't know. Skateboard, that's so much better than skeptad. Okay. Again, there's no published agenda for this yet, but it sounds like we're going to have a lot of information sharing about important transportation initiatives in King County. So Deputy Council President Michelle and I will be sure to share back with you all. And that concludes my report.
Great. Councilmember Ray, oh, sorry, Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Planning, Development, and Environment Committee of this council will meet
this council will meet on September 9 at 6:30. Note that this is not the usual day because this meeting is on the first Tuesday because of Labor Day. And we have two items, COM 0015, which is Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update Draft Review, and Comprehensive Plan Draft Environmental Impact Statement, which is COM 0071. So both comprehensive plan items. And then one additional upcoming meeting, the RIA-8 Salmon Recovery Council, will meet on Thursday, September 19, RIA-8 being the name of our watershed, and that agenda is not yet out. Thank you.
Thank you. And as mentioned earlier, Councilmember Ray does have an excused absence. Councilmember Martz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee will have one of the rare awesome in-person meetings, Wednesday, September 11, from 7 till 9 PM. Taking it on the road, we're going to be at the Mercer Island Community Center, which is a new location for SCA PIC. On the agenda includes a discussion of a new guide to enhance urban tree protection in King County, discussion on regional boards and committee appointments, update on the 2024 UASI Stakeholder Preparedness Review Survey, which I have no idea what that is, but that I will be reporting back to the council, an update on Crisis Care Center Proposal Review Panel, and finally, action on proposed Public Issues Committee operating policies. I'm sure that's the first of two touches. So I will report that back also to our council after being briefed on it. And then secondly, the Council Services Safety and Parks Committee is having a special meeting, different date and time this month, September 30th, here in council chambers at 6:30 PM. And on the agenda currently are the park system plan update, and the school zones, the ongoing schools zone speed camera. This concludes my report.
Thank you. Deputy Council President DeMichele?
I have no report on past meetings because all of my meetings were canceled during the month of August. So September 12, Eastside Human Services Forum will be holding a special extended meeting. We're going to be doing some diversity, inclusion, and equity training. And we're also going to be getting a report from the Bellevue School District on how they manage their legislative process. And so, and we have a business meeting planned as well. Eastside Transportation Partnership, as Councilmember Hall said, I have been selected to chair that meeting, so it'll be a very interesting, yeah, morning and day. So, and then finally, the Regional Transit Committee has been canceled for both the months of September and October. So that's my report. Thank you.
Thanks. Council President?
Thank you. I have two upcoming meetings on Thursday. The Growth Management Policy Board, GMPB, is meeting at 10:00 AM. We've got two items on there. One of them is talking about how municipal governments and counties and such can better coordinate with tribes, and particularly noting that it's required for comprehensive plans. And so, taking the moment to remind our cities. In this case, it's talking about the Tulalip Tribes and Snohomish County Coordination, what they've done. And then there's also a transit-oriented development update. And then, at 2:00 PM, the King County Affordable Housing Committee meets, and we continue our fun review of all of the city's comprehensive plan housing elements. And so for this month, it is Seattle, Samamish, Kirkland, Medina, and Kenmore. Quite a variety in there between what everybody has brought. But the staff has written comment letters, which, much like ours, always highlight the things that the cities have done well and that they should be recognized for in their comprehensive plans, but also the areas where they might not be meeting the King County, countywide planning policies, CPPs. And so, we talked through that, and will potentially approve those comment letters. And then we're also talking about the fact that some of the cities are not going to be choosing to submit their housing plans to the Affordable Housing Committee. Now, this is the first time we've done this, so it's a new process. But if they don't, what our response would be, and thus, whether it's a characteristic motion. There is some money, certainly from Department of Commerce and things like that, that would potentially be influenced by a negative letter from the Affordable Housing Committee. So, we are discussing what that would look like, because nobody wants to lose money. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Council President. The next item is the mayor's report. And there was an executive session earlier this evening to discuss collective bargaining per RCW 42.3.140 per N4. Issaquah's Culture Fest, this is Issaquah's welcomes you event. And so this Friday, we've heard it a couple times tonight, Issaquah will host its annual Eastside Welcoming Week event, Issaquah Culture Fest, from 5:30 to 7:30 on the Issaquah Community Center lawn on Friday, September 6. The event is a celebration of our cultural diversity here in Issaquah. Over 11,000 residents of Issaquah were born outside the United States, and over 32% of Issaquah households speak a language other than English at home. So come and join this free, family-friendly event with live music and dance performances, interactive art, resource booths, food trucks, and more. And while this is just one way that we uplift and shine a light on our community's diversity, it is one of our most beloved gatherings. There are a couple of upcoming events. Yakup Two Trees is having a birthday party. It's hard to believe, but it's been a year since Thomas Dambo unveiled Yakup Two Trees here in Issaquah along our Rainier Trail. Ever been to a troll's birthday party? Well, this is your chance. Join us Friday, September 6, from 3:30 to 4:30 PM for sweet treats and a community recycled art project to celebrate this milestone. Then head over to Culture Fest, and you can learn more about both of these events at our website at issquawa.gov. We're also having a dig-a-thon. Come volunteer for a Green Issaquah event on Saturday, September 14, at the Anthology Open Space. That is over on Newport Way. Participants will be working to remove as much blackberry as possible to clear space to plant native trees in the wetland area along a section of Tibbetts Creek. Registration is required, and you can sign up at issquawa.gov. And the last item I had was Salmon on Sunset with the Friends of the Issaquah Salmon Hatry. This is a relatively new event, a couple years old, and you may have heard or even seen that the first salmon has returned to the Issaquah Salmon Hatry. On Saturday, September 14, Fish and the Issaquah Alps Trail Club are hosting an all-day event to celebrate with family-friendly activities, crafts, trout feeding, a scavenger hunt, and more. So I hope to see you all there. Going to move into the Good of the Order and see if anything else is an item to share. Councilmember Hall?
Just wanted to say I'll be running the trout feeding station at Salmon on Sunset, so come on down to feed some trout.
Awesome. Any other Good of the Order to share? I'll go into a couple of upcoming meetings. So we have had a long break, but we are back into our regular role of things. The next regular city council meeting is Monday, September 16. And the anticipated agenda items include public safety facilities follow-up, leasing, next steps, the 2023-24 budget update, 2025 arch work program and budget, reallocation of arch trust funds for the Plymouth Housing Project in Redmond, credit card service fee policy, the lakeside transfer of development rights. And then the September 23 Committee of the Whole Meeting has been canceled. So there being no further business this evening, this meeting is adjourned at 7:55 PM.